Do we have a motion to accept the agenda presented?
I can I make a correction?
Go ahead.
I forgot to add the minutes from the special meeting where we approved the warning. Do I have those here?
Okay.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, we'll do that, yes. What date is that? That's January?
Twenty fifth.
Alright, so amended to do the minutes of January fifth. Are there any other additions or any amendments to be done? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, now we got the minutes. So let's do the seventeenth, January seventeenth first. Are there any additions or corrections for those minutes? Not, so we make a motion for accepting the minutes which is presented. All favor say aye. Both? And the special meeting of the twenty fifth to the morning, correct?
Yeah.
Are there any additions and corrections for those?
I have them if you want to take it quickly.
Yeah.
There, it was.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
That's right.
It seems to me, okay. Say aye, well, yeah. Not? Um, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Um, we have to make an appointment tonight for the town health, for the town health officer and we assistant. Town health officer. As I understand it, we had, um, Matt Seattle is willing to take the position of health officer for three years. And Roddy will take the assistant for three years, is that correct?
That is correct.
So probably we'll make a motion to do, um, accept their nominations. Wait a second.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a discussion about the two, the two intervals? If not, all favor say aye. Both? Hi, Mike, you want to give your report first? And how do we accept?
Yeah, um, once we just been rolling with the weather, it's, uh, we had one truck that's pretty much been a consistent breakdown every storm, but.
That the older one?
That's the, uh, the oldest one, the oldest ten.
The old day?
Yeah, you know, that's been keeping us busy and we don't have anything else to do. So, um, tomorrow we're gonna go out and give them something new to do, patch some potholes and give them a change of scenery for a few minutes, but everything's been put back together, so we're up and running and ready for the next one.
Just, just for, I'll give you this for clarification, that truck is the five year old truck.
Yeah, we're at that point.
Yeah.
Everything's blown by the Okcos is the auger chain one. It's been pretty consistent, but it's all the other that this is getting. Um, other than that, it's just working with Morgan, getting the grant stuff headed in towards spring and.
And you don't own the major stuff.
What's that?
You are the one who made it.
Um, most of it we are, some of the break stuff we sent out and actually APG accommodated us pretty quickly, so pull a few strings down there and they will get us right in and usually back out same day, so. Been a couple of good couple of trips. Yeah, so there, everything is back together. As it should be.
Any, Roddy, have any questions or what?
Uh, do you want me to bring up the public?
Oh, yeah, we could, we could. Yeah.
Uh, we need to change the way the bidding of all, uh, now the administrator wakes up the bet and then they have sent out to the contractors and the contractors bid on. And then the contractor hires, whoever wins the bid, the contractor hires a engineer. And the engineer comes back with things that weren't in the specs, again with, that should be in there. So I recommended that we change it to the town hires the engineer at the very beginning to come up with the specs. And then they wrote up and put on a form that people have a year and sent to the contractors to bid on. That makes it easier and everything is.
Basically, you're basically paying for that anyway, you're just paying it to the contractor. It's not like you're hiring a twenty thousand dollar engineer, it's more of a five hundred dollar. I think it's like a site plan more or less, so they just do an engineering of the site, it's not, they're not engineering the box over. They engineer the layout of everything and how it happens. But everyone that I've seen, they changed something before you get started on it, so it's like you should probably make those changes before you put it up to bid.
I'll give you a couple of examples. On the two that we let out, as far as the one I can't get rough. There were no anchors within that spec sheet. There's four on each bridge.
Put the guardrails.
Yeah, the guardrails. And that is a thousand dollars a piece. That's eight thousand dollars that we have to come up with ourselves for those bridges. Now, if you could drill them, that sort of be a valuable piece, but if you've got to dig, it'd probably be more than that, or if they can't put them in when, uh, they are putting the guardrails, it's probably gonna be more, so you've got to figure anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. And the other thing that was in the specs is the distance of the guardrails. There was only fifty feet for them, which is twenty five feet on each side. The minimum amount of guardrail that you could put up is thirty seven and a half feet.
On each side?
On each side, so that is twelve feet and a half on each side extra at thirty dollars in foot. So you're having another three sixty, four hundred dollars times two, eight hundred dollars.
So my question is, the people, the folks that got the bid, was it engineered before? No?
Oh, that did, the contractor hired the engineer after they get the bid. And they find that out after.
But the contractor, wouldn't that person know that had to be done before?
It wasn't in the bid, it was in the bid specs. They bid on the bid specs, they can't bid on anything different because they've bid on those specter and that.
Right, I think the contractor would know.
They probably do know, but it doesn't say that in the specs.
Why do they represent?
Well, that I'm not aware of.
So do you have a list of, um, engineers to go?
You could use the one if you've been using, like a long bell, this engineer is available. That's not a problem, you know, an engineer. But then you have everything in it, the engineer.
Now, the specs you're talking about, are those new specs, from the state, or they've always been on the books?
Well, I think a lot of them changed, uh,
Each one's, each one will be a little bit different, you know, the the general idea of what you're gonna do kind of stands the same, but the state comes in and they actually tell you what you're gonna do, so they're gonna tell you what the box is gonna be, how long it's gonna be, how deep it's gonna be, the width, height, and all of that, so the state does that portion of it. But they don't tell you the layout of how the head walls are gonna be, or how the guardrails are gonna be, or you know, the grade of the road, how it's gonna end up in the end. And that's what the site engineer ends up coming in doing, why after the fact is how it works now, it's, that's how it is. So he comes in after the guy gets the bid and then does all that, but like one, they ended up shortening the box two feet and then moving the center of the road and so you get all these different things that are going on after the fact, which would make more sense if you knew before you put it out. You'd be a little closer, you know, what you're gonna have respect for your, your, your job. Otherwise, you're really just kind of guessing at some level.
Yeah, I think what John's saying, so let, let's be more proactive and, and let's get, so we write the specs. Let, let the engineer give us, and then we write, and then we have a bid on correctly, and then we don't have to worry about it anymore, what comes along later on.
Right.
I think that's very important.
I think a lot of these contractors come in and they all kind of are looking sort of at the same thing, but they all have their own idea of how things are gonna play out, putting the job together, and then they sort of bid on it with their ideas. But if you had an engineer's or you had a more clear picture of what's gonna happen, I think you'd get a better bidding process in the end.
It's like having a set of plan when you build your house, there's, you know, if you don't have plans, you can.
You're just guessing.
Guessing, exactly. Because, I mean, I don't know, do we need a motion for this, John, to put in the minutes? Yeah. Who want any motion? We need a second to that? The motion being that we will always, we, before the bids go out, we gotta, we hire an engineer to write up the spec expectations for the bid, correct?
And they do the site plan, it's more of a site plan engineering, not so much of the bid, and I think you, you would have would work, to work your bid up with.
The site plan before the bid goes out.
Right.
Yeah.
And this is, the, the whole site plan thing has actually become, it was a state kind of mandated thing like in the last couple of years, it's not something that's always been done. But they make the, these contractors have that to do the job.
And I think, I also believe that there's different specs if it's federal or state run, correct?
She, sort of, they actually all kind of follow the same guidelines, because the state basically says we're using the, the federal regs to do jobs.
So all favor of that motion, say aye. Both? Okay. Uh, we have, um, four weight permits, you can put sand and gravel, they're no brothers, value, transportation, and Velco. Uh, we need a motion to, um, accept that and to have Morgan sign the, um, applications. Do you want to make a motion for that?
No.
Second? Should be in discussion, but do we have any discussion on any of the weight permits coming from anyone else then? Say all favor say aye. Both? Okay. Uh, Kim, I don't think she does, I don't think she's on.
No.
Um, you want to report, John, you want to talk about cemetery?
Uh, I have the, the map of the Openville Cemetery blown out with a blue loss that we just want to acquire, so we can see it, you know, like a shorter, that, if you can see it. And I had Morgan copy that and send it to the two man owners that were involved. And it wasn't, five minutes later, Matt Goodell sent right back, looks good. So, one of them is not a problem, but there's, I don't think the other one will be a problem either.
So I think that's a foregone, I think you'll be able to, to, that cemetery.
And the Burton Cemetery, the last that we heard from Tim Mueller was that where we wanted it, it was probably the only site that's on, on that land, I don't know if it was fifteen acres that you could build a house for even very acceptable to that idea. But we wrote back and asked him, maybe on the other side if they could do something, and he hasn't got back for it.
Um, Morgan, you might want to, you know, give him another look or so and then follow up, give him a chance to.
Might have been just tired, but a lot of it just came up, but.
Is he, you know, is he in town? Is he in town?
No.
Ask him.
He's the one holding the key, Mark.
No, he lives there.
Oh, he lives there?
Well, who, can go, doesn't he? He doesn't live there so long?
Well, he lives in Boston, yes. I think, not about, maybe there's something. Cause he owns that cemetery.
Um, Hi, what? Did you have a thought about this?
We have the, the request for proposals for the cemeteries and the parks in town.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Uh, I have one, yes, we have one here that we would open the bid on Monday, March twentieth. Figure that is just over a month. So you can fit that.
You ready to just review this, thank you.
Mm-hmm, I have a list of the boxes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the office, we have the maintenance for the cemetery, yes, right? And one for the building. And I think we're gonna send it to MJS, Land's Property Care, Eric Clark, Josh Brown, Russell Record, Eric, and no Ivan, Eric, Tom, and Ivan Seets. Is that fair, anybody? You want to do that? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay.
Yeah, then.
They will.
Let me have a motion, both, yeah. So I can.
Yeah, alright, so we need a motion, do you want to send the bids out, correct?
Yeah.
Both of them? Both? Second, for me?
Second.
All favor say aye. Both? Okay. Um, okay, now that we have the change of the minutes.
Well, I already checked with the sheriff and the deputy that was assigned to go look at the intersection and come up with a plan is now leaving that department, so I'm still waiting to hear a plan from them.
Is it gonna be replaced by anyone then?
They're gonna reassign one of the duties that they already have to go and look at it and come up with something for us.
Did any other speed sign go up? Did the last speed sign go up?
We haven't got it. I had to follow up with them.
I think it's gonna be a problem because their sign shop's closing.
Yeah, I was not a bad of that today, but we'll get these speed signs and then they'll be closing.
Is that what they're doing?
That's what they.
Okay.
There's that blind driveway sign.
Hmm, there's one there.
A blind driveway one?
There's not a blind driveway sign there.
There isn't.
Down there?
Going from Grafton towards Allen. There's no sign there?
No.
Don't they leave these signs in the prison?
They used to.
So they'll walk?
They're shutting that.
Not turning it down, so who's gonna make them?
Morgan's gonna find some of them.
I think that is.
I'll have to locate another supplier, yes.
Yeah.
There wasn't any other help, could, there was two of them.
Uh, not yet, they make the signs, but I'm sure they're pretty pricey.
Not yet.
Yeah.
I'll have to price them.
Have you priced them before?
Not through them.
No.
No, most of their stuff isn't cheap.
Because there's, when you're, um, just by the bridge, by Parker's, and you're going straight to Athens, there's a rise. You don't see that black line. Now, they did, at one time, that driveway went all the way around and it was done a lot. So they can go into the driveway and come out, and the other end where they have site on both sides.
They still run it.
They still?
Mm-hmm.
Is it open? People open, I saw a driveway, there are carp and other, farther one the other day. So they must still use it. I mean, with that, that was so not being such a fine driveway, they not coming to the first, go to the second part of that driveway to go in. They, I would like to see that stop sign back coming from Athens before the bridge on that side. Because it's just flip around that corner come out to the bridge, why, or they go straight into Grafton without the stop. And if the people on the bridge don't die, there's possibility of somebody.
We, you know, Kathy, I pay more attention to the four stop signs over on Chesthead, one at the chest one. And the four down in Dallas Falls and I, I, before I didn't realize, they weren't good.
The stop signs aren't good?
Yeah, the four, the four stop signs weren't good.
Yeah, but how do you know who goes first?
Well, they take turns, and everybody seems to take turns and and work, I believe that it worked, but it doesn't.
I like to see the stop sign back there, I mean.
One on Athens.
Yeah. Kinda told you in the beginning.
Well, are we gonna wait for the police, is that what we're gonna do, or make any decisions, Sheriff?
We wouldn't, this, maybe actually, because we've gone on his power with the sheriff. I don't know, you know, worse.
I mean, I'm hoping it won't take them very long, but I just don't even know if it could be done.
By the way, I'm fine with the stop sign being put back.
Yeah.
It's a bad idea.
Well, no, I mean, hmm. If you put one back in Athens, are you putting one in Grafton too? On the Grafton side?
There was never one there.
There was no.
I know, but are you gonna need a two-way, three-way?
Just have the heel sign.
So put the heel sign back.
Was that what you wanted to do?
There's no sign there now, right?
I know, I was asking.
Not gonna put the stop and run the bridge.
I'll finally get used to that stop sign, but
I would just.
You can't tell if it's about the rain that's happening.
Excuse me?
I'll finally get used to the new stop sign there, I can't tell if it's about the rain that's happening.
Well, what is everybody's, so if you put two, you have two stop signs, you do nothing from here.
Well, if they put their blink around and go over the bridge, and the guy stops, and the other guy stops, it's fine.
Well, they got the very way of this.
Have you had any complaints from particular, I have no family, I don't know.
Well, we, from a peanut gallery, I have John's idea, you do three stop signs and take turns. Uh, that would relieve all the confusion.
And that's what the sheriff's recommendation was.
Yeah. Stuff, yeah.
We recommended that, and I, I didn't like it, but after watching it, more, it works.
Yeah. At least it slowed people down, you know, and it just instead of just whipping around, I mean, I've seen it, people, see, they don't grab it, don't do anything, it's just slow.
Do we have another public area to make this?
You're under, you're under.
We have to change the ordinance. So you want to put that on the agenda for the next week and we do the ordinance?
Yeah, definitely.
In case, uh, you should notify the people that wanted it a different way if you're.
Yeah. So why don't we do that and then we'll put it on the agenda, they can come in if they want to talk about it.
You don't go all the way to the three stop signs, or just do one?
Well, I think that's a forty-four, let's give it a little bit of that, three minutes, you know?
We're gonna have to fix some stop signs.
Yeah, I want you to know that. Got to go to more.
It might have stop signs, but I hope.
Well, what's consensus, I mean, how do you want to proceed it, do you want to go with two stop signs, three stop signs, I mean, let's make a decision.
I was at the beginning that there was a vote. And I would have voted first time around with the sheriff's recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, it's, there, I was in there.
Uh, he's just.
So he made the recommendation to have three individual stop signs, but why are we going with that?
Well, what we went with the, right, the recommendation of the factors, what they wanted. Instead.
Because they didn't want a stop sign in front of their house.
Right.
Because he thought people were gonna stop and move their ass through the, duck them on the driveway. Well, we have a driveway sign there, he still had to stop.
Well, we could rip it.
Well, you go the same way, yeah.
Well, they still slow down, so. I stopped. I mean, it's not yield, you wait for the other people to go. I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, if there's nobody there, you don't.
What?
Yeah.
I, I don't care, I think, I think this is a, this is for the factory.
I think.
This is not working, it's working, it's doing.
It's a safety situation and they're gonna come back, they've never been an accident. Well, they're not home sometimes, and there's some close ones.
Well, there's always trouble there about this, uh, because we went against the sheriff recommendation, was that? But if you open it up to any liability, if something does happen there, you know? That's probably a big, like, problem. Beginning with all this, you know?
Well, I don't need to go wrong with it, with using the sheriff's recommendation, I mean, they're the law enforcement.
So.
So, no, and what did they do, done, if that's, if that's the conception that you have. So if you go with a three stop sign, then you follow the directions and then see what happens. How many people complain next time? I think you better have, I don't care what you do there, if somebody's gonna go in that, that's just my, my feeling.
I think, yeah, we're gonna have a safety, the safety plan. Um, of the situation, and I know, I don't know if it was that, because, you know, I mentioned that the Athens folks don't typically block at that sign.
More aggressive, if that makes sense, yeah.
So how do you want to proceed, do we, do we want to go to a degree and then put, make another mistake and then have another change of ordinance, or somebody say something?
I think I'm also, um, agree with the, the, you know, police, the sheriff's, um, recommendation for three-way stop sign.
Then we should stop the sheriff from doing whatever he's doing now in case he comes up with a different.
We stopped them, so.
No, we went back down there too, and evaluated the situation, yeah.
Yeah, they couldn't stop her.
So they didn't give you any sense when they all.
No idea. Because the guy that was originally supposed to do it just kind of dropped the ball and said, I'm leaving.
So why don't we, why don't we just go with the, with the three stop signs and then see what happens?
Are we having a public hearing? We have to.
It's gonna happen, yeah.
So that'll be on.
So Kathy hasn't worked it on the floor, tell anyone second that one? If not, then we'll.
Thank you, guys.
What's your motive?
That we, um, I made the motion to look at the, um, the recommendation for the sheriff to put a three-way stop, and the usual motion goes, goes that. And I would love to see a three-way stop, but it's my motion.
Oh, sorry, I, I want, I want to that way. I'll second your motion.
Do we have more discussion? Okay, so all favor of having three, Kathy's motion of having three stop signs, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, we got three, all, okay, everyone?
And we're still gonna have a call of the bid.
Yeah, we're having, yeah.
Oh, yeah, actually, before the next.
So, so they're for January.
Right. There's no.
There's a time to warn us, yeah.
Why not be, you check, check the time, when you time you want, and then beat through whatever you got. Um, there's no park committee unless you know something, Mike?
No.
Okay. Um, personnel?
Um, I just need one court signature signing off on the changes from.
Then we went on the.
From compensation?
Yeah.
And then this is also the one for the candidates sign that one, and so like what is the time when it will appear? Just saying that she received it under the stance, Ken?
Well, Ken.
Does the venue to sign these?
Yeah.
And I, I thought it was going to the.
Okay.
So we got that, um, anybody can talk about the buildings, the building committee report, there needs to be.
The elevator's inspected and it works.
Ever tried?
I hope.
Nice.
Yeah, um, and we can walk through it, give a, a tutorial on how to use it at some point, um. The foreign people ran out of materials, so the Lister's room is half finished. They're anticipating being back on Wednesday with everything to finish the rest of the Lister's room, and then, um, also, who's coming back? And then, um, also moving is coming back anytime after the nine. So next week to just touch up the things that they missed in there.
If you have any emergency key for, or any kind of, you should pass that now.
Yeah.
Part.
Yeah, we have that all downstairs.
So they go put that cover on the light instead?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Anything else?
And when will they do any kind of sanding, not be done with that?
Uh, we haven't, yeah, we haven't agreed on anything. I was kinda just waiting for the downstairs to be finished, but. Um, I can ask him to look at financially where we stand with the project.
Mm-hmm.
And see if they can move that back.
Cause they made some adjustments on the last ones. Yeah. Couple of weeks ago, making them. For upstairs here. Yeah, flooring and a couple of items of the. All season, you know? Um.
Well, they had.
They're not shooting, they're not doing the sanding.
No, there's something to do with what they had already done.
They're fixing the, they didn't mount the wires properly down in the basement, so we're doing our.
Okay.
And they're sanding and repainting the wall.
We got all those problems blocked with these guys.
Yeah.
I thought they had, um, given us a different price and they agreed on a different price.
Oh, they just said that where they're taking off their, like, mess up with the front door. Yeah.
Two thousand or four thousand dollars for a girl. Much.
More like two.
It's still hard, right?
Still pricing me, but.
All right, the wastewater, back to you. Okay, I, I'm just gonna briefly talk about it. Um, I have a set, I'll give you a copy. Um, the bottom lining, uh, this is all I know is that. Um, we do not have any place in town where we can have a, you know, separate system. So the only thing that we can do is to have a spray irrigation system. Where they spray and treat affluent in the woods. Um, there's only one piece of property. In town that that's. Can be used, and it's not owned by us, it's owned by a gentleman, you can read this by a guy named Neil Branchery. It's on Critical Road and in the business in Scotland. Uh, so I don't know what is gonna happen here, um, we have a, um, Zoom meeting. On Friday at, uh, two thirty here with Eric, uh, to learn more about it. So, um, if, if we can't find suitable area for the spray field, I don't know what happens. So you guys can read the memo here and take a look at the map. And we'll know a lot more on Friday, I know you can't make it.
Yeah, I read through all that, just looked through the card.
No, uh, but Morgan and I are gonna do it, and Saturday morning, and the planning commission is certainly welcome. Uh, and I know it's answered, it was answered in Aspen, I said, you know, so.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't look very good, but I, I think there's, there's something that's even more disturbing, I think. And that is, if this can't work and we can't have a separate system, and there is barriers. Down the line, you know, five or 10 years, what do we do? And that's where the federal government is gonna come in, or the state government, and they're gonna build something. That might cost thirty million dollars, god only knows. And you're gonna have to do it, otherwise you try to count it, so I, I think it's, whether this, whether this wastewater thing ever. Um, can be done or can't be done, but I think if it falls by the wayside and we finish. We've always run this risk, I believe, so what do we do if there is a barrier? And I don't have any answer for that, um, but I, I think it's something you gotta keep in the back of your mind. So it's, it's very disturbing, I mean, I read this thing and. And it's, uh, I, I never expected this and I don't think she did either, so. And I was on, I was in the wastewater, wastewater study in two thousand. Two, or whatever it was, a visual one, and this never came up, so I don't know what happened, but anyway, that's the. That's what it is.
Did they, um, talk about redoing some of their tests?
No, it's, it's perfect, it doesn't work, there's no soil, but it can be done.
Even though they, they, it was really what?
They re-got it, they, they erected the soils and knocked out what we need to do. That's it.
Right.
Yeah. That's the thought.
And that piece of hillside is the only place that, only because they need nine acres. Minimum of nine acres for a spray.
Huh? That's not what?
What they do care is they, um, they, they somehow they treat the aquifers through some kind of chemical treatment. And then it's piped up into the woods and they have sprinklers. And they spray, there's irrigation, and that's what happens. That's how it's done. That's the thing, and I can't tell you all about it. I can't tell you all the leads and answers, but, but that's how it's done. And, uh, when I lived in Arizona and I was gonna move out there and build a house. In Arizona, you cannot put a separate system in. So you have to have, they don't have a spray field, but what happens is they treat the water and then you use it for your irrigation before you plant some flowers. And that'd be the same basically. So we'll go through some kind of filter system and then spray.
Biodegradable.
I guess, I don't know what it takes, we'll learn more about it on Friday, but, uh.
So.
It's not good either.
Friday at two thirty?
Two thirty. Yeah.
Um, uh, other business, you have something, um?
Yeah, I saw in the minutes that Rich was gonna talk with one of our real dealers about energy efficiency, that caught my eye. Um. So far, the town hall has been. Um. Barely completely gone through, but not checked. It's a very. A, a lot of things were done, um, but they were not finally verified with a good energy audit. And I would recommend that the next step be having a good independent. Energy auditor, not on this side, to an insulation contractor. Uh, do an energy audit that does both the lower door test, which has the air infiltration. Into the building. And an infrared survey, um, which is pictorial and gives you actual, um. Information of where a leak is occurring.
And let me stop you there.
Yeah.
At the conference that I attended today, there is a program. And the state recommends that we apply, that if you have older building. For heat or for insulation windows that we apply, and there are two things you can do, you can do the walkthrough. Which stay open and do a walkthrough, but they don't recommend that because if you do the walkthrough, you're only using, you can only use the four million dollars. But if you hire, if you do the one you're talking about, where they actually come in. And do the infrared and they do the whatever, and state does all this, then you have, you can cap the forty-five million dollars that's out there. And if, if you, if, if you can, go through the program and you're accepted. Then they're gonna do insulated building for you, the heating system for you, the windows and all that, that would be covered by these plants. So I talked to Ken about that this morning, and I haven't had a chance to talk to, to, um, Morgan, but. We, I think definitely we should do that survey, uh, it's absolutely, it's, there's no way.
Um. There are, uh, few energy auditors around, um. I'll give Morgan, and if you're interested, I'll send links to you, there's an organization. That's based in West Orange called the Neighbor Works Heat Squad. And they do service London County. Um. Their, their main, um. Uh, customer base are individuals, but they do. Uh, work like this for organizations, towns as well. Um, their energy audits are incredibly inexpensive. And they're, um, um. How, if, if we insist on, and I would have, have to ask you to insist on having, um. Our report that actually has the, um, infrared thermography in it, so you can actually see where the leaks are. Um, that should define this building pretty well. I think it's in good shape. Um. I'm not sure what other, uh, town buildings we might tackle, except who owns the library?
That's their own.
That's their own.
And the schools are all too.
Okay.
And the school, that program, they can do the same thing, and they can operate their heating system and not, they, all that kind of stuff, if they didn't fly. And the only other building in the town is, is Tom Barra.
Yeah.
But, but I think, I think before we look at who's gonna do it, I think we have to follow the state's recommendation, they might have. A, a company that they recommend that, that we have to use, I don't know the particulars, but Morgan will find out.
Yeah, it's a detail, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all good.
Yeah.
Good idea. So I think the building is probably in pretty good shape.
No, they insulated the ceiling, I don't believe. I think that's one of the areas, you know?
That, that, that whiteness beyond that hole in the grating up there?
Yeah, I don't know, that's what came to.
Used to be a direction route into an unheated attic, that's why it was black before. Now it's covered over and you've got insulation all over the top. Insulation in most of the sidewalls, there are problems. You go through that wall right there, you're gonna through brick. Um, there are problems in certain areas getting insulation of the sidewalls. I know that there was work done in the basement at a separate time, and that should be pretty well sealed up. So they're probably just places that the insulators missed. When they were doing their work, that maybe go, be gone back into to go over it again, um. And the windows, I think should be in pretty good shape. They were, um, iffy a long time ago, but I think those have been reworked. So. It's more like a, uh, a tuna kind of job really than a.
Right.
Start from the beginning.
But of course, it's worth going through it because if they find problems, then it's very grand.
They, they will save.
Yeah.
The amount of the energy out of it would end up at two hundred dollars. If this, this might cover the heating system itself, I'll.
I don't know. Well, no, it's not gonna cover any, any heating system that is not electric or bio-thermics, they're not gonna cover. If it's oil or propane, done, you, you pay, you do beside, that's what we're talking.
And the converted.
They wanna get everything, they wanna get everything converted, the heat pumps or this, you know, the five leaves, it wells in the ground and.
So the grant you were talking to them about, was it any honeyful I can converge to?
Well, we already converted, too. If we would have done it now, we could follow all of the, it's great. But, you know, unfortunately, we jumped the gun, so.
But I guess so, if we got rid of the. Of course, hot water, oil fire, to strictly like a baseball, whatever.
Well, they, they're claiming that they don't need that, this, these have, this is what they're saying, that these will suffice, this is.
Well, I think so, is that true, that's not true?
This is what the state is telling us.
Never put all your eggs in the same basket.
I, I'm only telling you, this is where.
I'd be a little bit of that, but. I would love, well, the oil burner is, um, if it was nothing else, that it. You need something when the electric grid goes down.
True too, yeah.
It's, it's very, and particularly since this is the center of, uh, town government communication, emergency management. Uh, we had a ice storm and the power grid went down, these heat pumps would go down, and we'd have to have something, probably to keep this alive.
Okay, but there's an extra, part of this whole program, they will, okay? Put in solar panels and batteries so that when the electric goes down and the heat pumps work. That's part of the program.
Okay, if, if you can island, but this, this is not a particularly good site.
I, I understand that, but I mean, these, this is what, this is what they're.
They'll take for our solar, up at the town shed. And Green Mountain Power will agree to island. Draftings, so we can be.
Yeah.
Our own little mini grid.
And, and that's another option that we have, yes.
Uh, well.
But it does, but it does, if power grid goes off, and you don't have backup power, doesn't mean you're giving out any solar arrays you have.
Uh, if you, yeah. Your solar arrays with backup power will back up and.
Oh, yeah, but you have to have the batteries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you could, if you have good solar exposure here, and you had a field out there, you could probably power up. Maybe not the heat pumps as well as you might, but you could at least run the, the electricity for the, the old water burner. Uh, to actually heat this building with PV and water, takes a big array. Uh, we just don't have it on site.
Yeah.
And if you go offsite, then you have to have some way of islanding, islanding the, the community, which is. Well beyond what I think Green Mountain Power is willing to even cover now.
Well, anyway, there, there, that's, there, there are programs that we need to invest in, to asset all the kind of thing, but the big push is, is to get rid of propane and, and fuel oil. And those kinds of things, and convert everything to, uh, some, or electric pumps or other, and that's where the, that's where the money is. Being pushed is what I gather today from the news. So we have any other business?
We can keep our, yeah, solar now.
Now again. Any other business? I would comment. If not, I'm voting to the burn. Maybe hold. All favors they are.